Good evening. I'd like to call the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, May 6th, 2025 to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I'll move the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. First items up are presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements. Three A is the Public Service Week proclamation. Looking to Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. May gives us the opportunity to recognize a number of public servants in the organization and kind of the overarching week is Public Service Week, which we're in the midst of right now. I had an opportunity today as the leadership team to host an ice cream social for staff, went very well. But more importantly, it just is a chance to reflect on the really skilled public servants that we have working here at the City of Rosemount. So there's a proclamation in front of you, Mayor and council, to work through and read. But just, I would say on behalf of the leadership team, this is a city staff and a segment of public servants that we're just so proud of across the organization, across the departments, really skilled folks. For example, we've got folks winning individual career service awards, inner economic development manager, you know, city clerks getting recognitions and certifications, let alone city, winning City of the Year again, which may come up later on in the council meeting if the council chooses to talk about it. So that doesn't happen without a segment of, if you want. That doesn't happen without a segment of public servants that are really operating at the peak of their game. And we, as we go through job interviews, which we have a lot of right now with how much we're growing, you know, we often get the conversation from applicants, what's it like to work here and what's the culture like? And we're able to say that this is a place that folks really enjoy working and are proud to be on this team and serve this community. So Public Service Week is a chance to recognize that and we're so proud of them and proud to be part of this team and would love it if you all could read the proclamation.
Okay. So the recommended action will be to read that proclamation and put it into effect. So from city council, go ahead and start.
I will start. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keep our nation working and?
Whereas public employees serve to keep our city working by ensuring clean water, reliable power, public infrastructure, health and recreation, public safety, and proper management of public funds and resources, and more. Whereas the efficiency of government relies on public employees who provide services in the quality and quantity required and expected by the public and?
Whereas the public employees of the City of Rosemount are committed to exhibiting the highest standards of professional excellence, creativity, skill, and customer service.
Now and therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Weisensel, Mayor of Rosemount, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim May 4th through the 10th, 2025, as Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Rosemount. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and in particular, city. Dated the 6th day of May 2025, Mayor. So it be said, so it be proclaimed. And that completes that proclamation. We'll move on to 3B. Presentation of the Rosemont Area Arts Council RAC. Mr. Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. This evening, we've invited the Rosemont Area Arts Council in to take an opportunity to provide an update on the past year's activities and then also talk about what's coming up for the future of the Arts Council. We've worked hand in hand with the Arts Council now for several years through a service agreement, which is on the agenda later, to, in essence, have them provide our community with arts and cultural activities and events for the community to enjoy. And they've done a wonderful job. And so with that, I am... Tony, you're gonna... Yep, come on up, Tony. Tony's gonna give you guys an update.
Please stand for questions. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you very much. If you don't know me, my name is Tony Sasso. I'm the 2025 Chair of the Rosemont Area Arts Council. I hope that you've maybe have seen me on stage or in a couple of videos that have been on Facebook. I just wanted to take this opportunity once again to thank all of you. We cannot do anything in the Arts Council without the tremendous support that we receive from the City of Rosemount and the city council. And it's amazing to think of what we have accomplished just in the last 12 months. As you will know on our website, which is rosemontarts.com, our mission statement is building and strengthening our community through the arts. And it's the Rosemont Area Arts Council, so of course, it's not just Rosemount, it does include the surrounding communities. And we found that we have lots of people from the surrounding communities joining us, becoming members of RAC, and also participating in our many plays and concerts and events and volunteer works and everything like that. I know that Ann Locke has diligently prepared a nice attachment with all the things that we've done, but I just want to highlight a couple of the important big things that we have coming up and some of the numbers that would, I think, would give you an idea of exactly how much that we do as part of the Arts Council. It's amazing that we also offer so many free events, lots of free events. Most of them are during our Art Blast Celebration, which is the last week of June, but these are things that people don't have to pay for. And it's not just in the Arts Council, I mean, the Staples Center, the Central Park area, but also in the library, we have Meet the Authors series, we have workshops, we have a country fair, all free, we have a book fair that's all free. And a lot of the stuff, like I was saying, during our Art Blast Celebration at the end of June is all free. So it's amazing how many people have showed up to this. And as I was looking through these statistics over the last five years, if you compare where we were at COVID levels in 2020 and where we are now in 2025, we have literally tripled the amount of events and the people and the number of things that we put on for the community. For example, in 2024, we had 105 events that were free, free to the public, attended by over 4,400 people. All right? And these are things that they didn't have to pay for. We also put on a ton of concerts and comedy shows. We have this thing called sports comedy improv, and I think Logan would know what we're talking about here.
Right.
But we've gotten really, really popular with our concerts. They're really attracting. And of course, we have our normal routine of bluegrass, country, and western, but we've also brought in some tribute bands and cover bands, which have been extremely popular. And we've had cover bands for Billy Joel, John Denver, Johnny Cash, Queen, Elton John. And I'm very happy to report that we are bringing back ABBA Salutely Fabulous. We're bringing back the ABBA Tribute Band, which was probably our biggest attended event. There was, I would say, standing room only, but it really was dancing room only in the back. And so we're getting them back to the Staples Center for another concert. We have two play groups or two theater groups in the Arts Council. One is the Front Porch Players, which is for people of all ages. The other one is the Second Act Players, for people that are 50 years of age and older. We put on some tremendous shows. We did Neil Simon's Come Blow Your Horn. We did a fantastic show called Blight Spirit. And I heard that the lead actor in that show was really talented and very handsome. I think his name was Tony. But other than that, we've had some really good shows. And again, when I say the Rosemont Area, we've been attracting people and actors from way up in Shoreview, City of Minneapolis, Hastings, Lakeville. We're starting to delve into that group in Lakeville, what I used to be in, and we're drawing him into Rosemont. And we nailed two more people in our last play, Jack Benny's Not 39 Anymore, who both said, boy, I didn't realize that this theater was here. I liked this place, you know? So we have a lot of really good attraction for some of the actors coming in as well. In 2024, the last 12 months, we had 21 different nights where we had a play going on, attended by over 1,600 people. That was, of course, at the Staples Center. We also offer classes occasionally, mostly during our Writers Fest. We have a Writers Fest, a book fair, and we actually have classes on book writing and stories and creating things. And it's good, a lot of information for people that are getting into writing books and a lot of resources for them to make it in the future for that. I wanted to tell you just briefly about some of the big events we got coming up. And one of them is a concert, which isn't going to be at the Staples Center, it's actually at the Shepherd of the Valley Lutheran Church in Apple Valley. Because it's a concert by Don Irwin, who is a nationally known Steinway piano performer. And he's coming here to do a concert at Shepherd of the Valley because they have a nice theater, nice acoustics, and of course, they have the Steinway there. So we're bringing him in. It's a free concert that RAC is sponsoring, but we're having it in an Apple Valley location. So we're going to get a chance to give a slideshow presentation, to be the president of the Rosemont Area Arts Council, and spread the word even further to get that word out that, hey, there's a really nice theater and a nice area and a great council that's here in Rosemount. Another thing that we're doing, of course, is the Art Blast, and that's June 22nd through the 28th. It's the last week of June. Tons of activities, plays, music, concerts, things for kids, activities, all open to the general public. And that is probably one of our busiest weeks that we have through the year. And of course, I would be missing not mentioning Christmas at the Staples Center. It's our annual variety show. And we've also started to delve into other areas there. We bring in dancers, a brass band, we have some musical skits. We have some very talented singers in the Arts Council. We all happen to be church canters for our choirs. And we've been really striking it really well with the public by doing some very cool harmony songs during the Christmas season. And, you know, of course, as Mayor would know, he's the emcee of our lighting the Christmas tree when we light up the Christmas tree. So that's another thing, again, free event that attracts a lot of people. So I'm going to close off with just some of the big numbers. Like I mentioned, as far as the volunteer hours, it's very interesting that just in the last week, we had that volunteer appreciation over at the Staples Center, where the mayor talked about all the different organizations. Of course, we had a large showing of RAC people there. But as far as the volunteer hours, I think it's very interesting, in 2020 for COVID, right, and we track all these hours for all the people, we had a total of 4,066 hours by 50 people. That was 2020. Now you fast forward it five years later in 2025, 11,568 hours. That's three times as many by 152 individuals, three times as many people. And we always like to put a monetary figure to this. So the 11,568 hours, even if you say that's $25 an hour, you know, which is a pretty low wage, that amounts to over $289,000. And if you want to be more realistic, about $40 an hour, that's $462,000, all done by volunteers. Do we want anything for this? No, no. We do this because we love it. We love Rosemount. We love the Arts Council. And that's why we have so many volunteers that are coming up very enthusiastically, even though we don't get paid for it. We get paid by the enrichment of bringing arts to the community, which is really what our mission statement is. So again, I want to just again echo from, on behalf of the Arts Council, the tremendous support we get from the City of Rosemount is just amazing that we are able to use that Staples Center to bring in more and more stuff. And it's allowed us to bring in a wide variety of acts, a wide view of concerts, groups, entertainments, and stuff for the City of Rosemount. And I can't wait to go to Shepherd of the Valley and just promote us even further there. I appreciate your time. Let me have this a couple of minutes. Is there any questions for me?
Moving up to council, any questions or comments, accolades?
Accolades, thank you so much for all of you, all you do for the community. You guys are, have really been a very visible presence in town the last few years. And you do amazing work.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I guess my only comment was, I went right away to the volunteer hours. So not only the volunteer hours, but your numbers for individuals contributing are way over before pre-COVID. So you seem to keep growing.
Yes.
And that's because you're really reaching out to Rosemount and the area around?
Yeah, year over year over year, it's been increasing almost exponentially. And I like to tell a little anecdote. The Rosemont Expo that we have, when I first joined the council six years ago, and we were at the expo, I can't tell you how many people would come by and say, oh, there's a theater in the Staples Center? I didn't know that. You know, I had no idea that was there. And I've lived in Rosemont for 25 years. I never knew that was there. And now in the last couple of years, it's like, oh, yeah, I've been there. I did this. Oh, yeah, I recognize you. Oh, yeah, we were there. It's just, we're getting the word out and people are finding out about us. And we're joining more and more, getting more and more membership, which is exactly what we want.
Congrats.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And how can residents find you again?
It's very simple, rosemontarts.com.
Okay.
Yeah. And then before every event, whether we do at the Staples Center, someone usually gets up, it's usually me, and introduces the band or whatever's coming on. And we emphasize, hey, go to rosemontarts.com. It's really easy to sign up. And you have, at that website, you can become part of our mailing list. I always joke, we're not going to sell your email address to anybody, you know? But you get first notice of everything that's coming up because we send out all the events and including the volunteer opportunities too.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Do you take donations?
Absolutely. Yeah.
I mean, but it's through the website, you mean, right?
Yes, you can contribute to the website. For every, every show that we do, everything that goes on at the Staples Center, we always have a little collection box. We sell concessions, all the money that we sell concessions goes into our budget. And I always say that our concession workers love those three magical words, keep the change. So whenever they purchase something, they can take the change and deposit in our donation box. But yes. And we get a lot of help from a lot of the local businesses in Rosemount, too. They sponsor a lot of our events, which is really nice. Thanks.
Thank you, Tony, and those RAC members that are here. Certainly, I've attended multiple events, enjoyed all of them, including the dancing only ABBA. Not that I'm an ABBA fan, but my wife was. So went there, and it was good music anyhow. So I was really surprised. I learned that they were actually one of the first bands that had come when RAC had started, I guess, back in the day, if I remember right.
Yeah, I'd have to defer to John and Ann Locke.
Yeah, John Locke had mentioned that, that that was one of the first ones that they had brought, and then they had brought them back. So really good. And I do, it's okay if you go over in the greater Rosemont area of where Shepherd of the Valley is, that's okay over there. So we're good. Building and strengthening our community through the arts. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you.
And that completes item 3B. We'll accept that presentation and we'll move on to 2025 National Police Week proclamation. Chief, please come forward for 3C.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Take a Chance on Me is now stuck in my head. Thank you. I might listen to The Winner Takes It All on the way home. So, all right. See.
Have you heard that before?
They're good songs.
He's so relevant.
All right. So I'm up here today to talk about National Police Week. And I appreciate council in our city recognizing it tonight, as you have in the last couple of years. In 1962, President Kennedy recognized May 15th as National Peace Officer Memorial Day, recognizing the week that May 15th falls as National Police Week. So this year, it is May 11th to 17th. And it is recognizing all the officers that have been killed in the line of duty for the past year and historically. So just to throw out some numbers, I looked it up in 2025, there's going to be 345 officers that are going to be added to the memorial wall in DC. And that includes 148 officers that were killed in action last year in 2024. And then there's 197 from prior years that have been identified. So it's going to be actually my first opportunity to attend the conference down there this year. It's a week-long conference put on by what's called COPS, which is Concerns of Police Survivors. So it's a, it's a chance for surviving families, surviving coworkers to come down and go to a variety of different breakout sessions and connect with people in a network that will bring them benefits for years to come. So there's also several events. We've got a candlelight vigil on May 13th. We've got a National Peace Officer Memorial Service on May 15th. Those are all day long events where there are literally thousands of people there to pay tribute to those that have been killed in line of duty. So we are heading down, a couple of us, with the Burnsville Police Department to help them make their journey, to put Officers Paul Elmstrand and Matthew Rugi on the wall. I've learned that they are going to be in Section 17-WT, as in William Tom, dash one. So Section 17, West Row, one. That's where their names will be found. And I'm also going down there to find the name of Officer McDermott, who is Rosemount's only officer that's been killed in the line of duty. So I will be sure to share my experience when I come back, but thank you for the proclamation today.
All right. So with that, we will, as the council, proclaim National Peace Officers' Day.
Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers' Day, and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others and?
Whereas the members of the Rosemont Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the City of Rosemount. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property and by protecting all citizens against violence and disorder and?
Whereas the men and women of the Rosemont Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service.
Now and therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Weisensel, Mayor of Rosemount, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim May 11th through 17, 2025, as National Police Week within the City of Rosemount, and hereby publicly salute the services of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Throughout the City of Rosemount, we urge and encourage all citizens to take time to appreciate our public safety officers and honor all police, all peace officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. Dated the 6th day of May 2025, sign the mayor. With that, that completes the proclamation for the National Peace Officers' Day and National Police Week. Thank you. We'll move on to response to public comment, item four. I don't believe we have any this evening. We'll move on to public comment. Anyone wishing to come before council may do so at this time. Please state your name, your address, limiting your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone? Anyone? And seeing no one making the mad dash to the podium, we will close the public comment and move on to our consent agenda. This evening, and the consent agenda includes bill listings, minutes of the April 15th, 2025, regular meeting minutes, renewal of a consumption and display setup permit for Genesis Ranch, a donation acceptance from Donna and Dale Kwame, Kwam, excuse me if I mispronounced that, for Greg, who passed away in March 25. A service agreement between the Rosemont Area Arts Council and the city, you heard their presentation previously. Limited use permit from M.Dot, Min.Dot Dumore Greenway, that's along Highway 3, for, to have our Greenway there, and the approval of a subdivision agreement for Amber Fields Number 22. So with that, is there any items council, any council member wishes to pull for further comment or discussion? Seeing none, I'll move the consent agenda, items A through G for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Weisensel, second by Klimpo. Roll, please.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Klimpo?
Aye.
And the consent agenda is approved for zero. We have no public hearings this evening or unfinished business. We'll move to the new business, our youth commission appointments. And whom I looking to for that?
I can, I can take that one quick, Mayor, members of council. Just a really nice opportunity tonight to appoint the youth commission. And so with having a light agenda, we thought we'd place this on new business, just to give council a quick moment. And the mayor specifically is the council liaison to the youth commission. But Councilman Klimpo, Mayor Weisensel, had a chance to interview and get to know a number of folks interested in serving on the youth commission last week, prior to our volunteer recognition event. And I'll let you guys speak to it. It was a really nice opportunity to meet the young people in Rosemount that are looking to serve on the youth commission. And so they all fit the bill and all expressed interest in staying on. And the list is in front of you there, Mayor. But Mayor and Councilman Klimpo, if you'd like to comment more on last week's interview and what you gleaned from them, happy to let you do so.
Anything?
You know, I have a teenage child myself, a senior in high school. So it's just so gratifying to see these youth in our committee come and express a desire to serve. Each and every one of them has really good ideas for any, everything from ways to engage the public to ways to improve the fabric of Rosemount. So it's really cool to see that kind of engagement among these kids. Just super impressed with them. One of them had, is returning for a third year. So that's exciting to see, a third year returning commissioner. And I remember her advice was, check your email. So we'll keep that one out there. But, and also the advice, though, that she gave was that above and beyond even the required meetings, the real value comes from the activities and the things that they do together as a commission in town. It comes from meeting with the kids at the splash pad, and it comes from handing out trees and things like that. So those kids seem like they're getting a lot of value from it. Really great to see that involvement. And I just think the future is bright. We've got such great kids in Rosemount. Mayor?
Yeah, we had a fair number of returnees. And it's always good to see that. Shortly here, we're going to be seeing the graduation of our seniors. There will be a joint legacy tree planting that'll occur later this month, where the new commission and the old commission will get together and share wisdom between them. And then that'll start off our next year with the new group of our youth. So what I'm going to do here is I'm going to name off the youth that have applied for our commission, and then we'll move to the recommended action, accepting them. So starting out, we have Eden Carter, Hannah Decker, Haley Geller, Genesis Geary, Cindy Harvey, Olivia Howie, Anushka Jacob, Autumn Jacobson, Rebecca John, Aiden Johnson, Cara Mason, Lily Nolan, Rachel Ramondo, Adele's Jade Sayapal, I'm sorry if I butchered that up, Alexis Sell, Jacob Sakari, and Ava Alstead. Would any of the council members wish to move the recommended action?
I'll move the city council appoint the individuals named or listed below to the youth commission for the 2025-2026 term.
I'll second.
Motion by Klimpo, second by Freski. Roll, please.
Freski?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Klimpo?
Aye.
Weisensel? Aye. And that completes four zero, the youth commission appointments. We're looking forward to a fantastic year with these kids. Completing nine, we move on to 10 announcements, city staff updates. Mr. Martin?
Mayor, not much more to add tonight. I'd give the council a minute to reflect on the Real Estate Journal Awards if they wanted to. And the other, only other thing that I would also throw out there, Chief Springer went off to weekly training, but wanted me to share, we do have two firms that submitted their qualifications for consideration to move on to the proposal level for our fire staffing and response model analysis study. So he and I are starting to piece through those, and those folks will get invited, assuming they meet their qualifications, to submit a proposal, so they get some facts and figures about what they could do. So that process is ongoing. And looking forward to more to come out of that. So with that, I could hand it back to the mayor.
I'll open it up to council and whoever wants to share the news. We had five nominations at the Real Estate Journal event where we were honored, and we'd like to share the results of that. Anyone?
Well, he's not in here. Where'd Eric go? Eric Van Oss, our very own Economic Development Specialist, won Developer of the Year. So we were really super excited for Eric and to see Adam accept that award on his behalf. So that was really amazing to see that win. I'll let one of you take over from here.
Land acquisition.
Well, I'm pulling up the wonderful social media post that was...
There you go.
You weren't prepped for this. I apologize. I didn't...
No, that's okay. Because I don't want to miss anything. So, six hours ago, there was a nice post on the City of Rosemount Instagram and Facebook post. But we were nominated for five nominations, City of the Year, which we earned, we won for the second year in a row. I think we all were a little bit surprised and very happy. Eric Van Oss, our superstar, was named Economic Developer of the Year. We were also nominated for, oh, no, the third winning, win for Rosemount was, actually, it was the U of M, was the most significant investment sale. And that was the U of M Meta Land Deal. So they accepted that on behalf of the U of M.
For the whole state, yeah.
For the whole state, yes, correct. And then we were a finalist for the Government Community Facility, our new public and police works building. We did not win that one. And we were also a finalist for the Restaurant Entertainment Award, which was Lifetime. So it was a great event, and we were, all of us got...
You have comments?
Yes. The only thing I would add to that is, you know, it's great to receive those awards, but I think it goes back to some of the things that we try to speak about a lot about a council here, is that the work that the staff does behind the scenes, the administration and the directors...
and the directors, the culture that they've led with positive intent in this community is just, it's nice to be recognized, but it's nice for other people to see the work that's being done. So that's, you know, five nominations and three wins, and once again, that back-to-back win as City of the Year was something we weren't expecting, but I think speaks volumes to the work that this staff and the directors and the leadership with Logan have done to really set Rosemount as one of these communities to be in, and looking forward to a lot more to come.
And just to piggyback on that, echo those comments, certainly our community development team, along with all the other departments that add to that, and that includes Public Works, I'm gonna miss some here, but our financial group, as well as our administration, certainly, big kudos to the City of the Year. I think that's, says an awful lot, particularly the back-to-back, and recognizing that it wasn't just the county here or this, you know, the city region, it included the whole state, so two years in a row, we're pretty proud of that, and look forward to another year of great community development that we'll see come forward. So any other comments from council, then we will move to the upcoming community calendar. I just shared that we had that Arbor Day celebration, 150 trees went out of the door about 17 minutes, we were gone through all of that. It was amazing. With that, we have coming up the citywide garage sale, starting on May 8th through the 10th, through various locations. You can find that on our website, where they all are. There's a community tennis night, May 9th, at Erickson Park, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We have our spring cleanup on May 17th, so all the things you didn't sell, you may want to take to the cleanup at Dakota County Technical College. It'll be placed on their east lot. The Parks and Natural Resources Commission meeting has been moved to May 19th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. here at City Hall. The next Port Authority meeting is May 20th, from 6:00 to 7:00, followed by City Council, May 20th, from 7:00 to 8:00. And I would just jump ahead a little bit, City Hall will be closed on Memorial Day, but we will be having a Memorial Day event at Central Park, starting at 11 o'clock, featuring the Rosemount Legion, Rosemount VFW honoring the fallen soldiers through a special ceremony. And with that, is there any other business to come before council? Seeing none, we will adjourn the meeting and return to our work session. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.